I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me and the small screen alongside the public gallery. Could you please ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent? And councillors, may I please remind you to speak directly into the microphone which is now working and make sure that your card is pushed firmly into the console. Members of the public, I'd like to say that as a committee we understand that the matters under consideration tonight can be emotive but please be respectful of those around you. So we move to the main items of business. Minutes of the last meeting have been on the table for the last thirty minutes, are you happy for me to sign them?
Three minutes.
Thank you. Any apologies for your absence, Emma?
We have apologies from councillor Simon Thornton.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
Number four of the meeting.
Okay. Sorry, councillor Reynolds.
Thanks, I'd like to declare a non-perpetual interest in the first item which is six point two in the fact that I lived in Maple Hatch Close some forty-two years ago for ten years, literally opposite the site, but I do know some of the people in the gallery today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other declarations of interest? Thank you. Any questions from the public received?
None received.
Peter, any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation?
Thank you Chairman, I do have an update for members. It's partly as a sort of general update for them and also a sort of verbal update to both items on the report and particularly page is seven and pages twenty-four where we deal with the development plan. So I'll just read out a specific updated wording in relation to the adopted local plan and the emerging local plan, which members will be aware that the examination of the emerging local plan took place over the last couple of weeks and it's revised wording about the weight we should be giving to those policies. Just before I read that specifically to you, I don't think it has any specific impact on any matters that are before you this evening, but you will see updated wording within your agendas going forward, given the change in the stage the local plan has reached and how that can be considered and we will reflect on those policies appropriately as we go through where relevant. So if I may Chairman, I'll just read the specific paragraph for you. So the council is currently in the process of replacing the adopted two thousand and two local plan with a new two-part document. On the twenty-first of December twenty sixteen, the council submitted the draft local plan, part one, strategic policies and sites for examination. The examination hearings took place between the twenty-seventh of June and the sixth of July this year. The inspector has indicated that modifications will need to be made to the plan and invited the council to submit a list of those proposed modifications. These modifications will be subject to public consultation. All representations received on these modifications will be taken into account by the inspector before he issues his formal written report following examination. It is considered that substantial weight can now be given to policies where there are no modifications proposed going forward and significant weight can be given to those policies when modifications are proposed. So that's specific wording I wanted members to be aware of and as I say, going forward, we're highlight ones, we're relevant, whether they're subject to modifications or not and you can apply the appropriate weight based on the advice from members. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Right, so we will... Just to note that in the event of site inspections being deemed necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday the seventh of August at a time to be agreed later on. So we move on to the main items of the agenda, item six point two which is item A1 WA two thousand and seventeen oh six eight three, nine Maple Hatch Close, Godalming GU seven one TQ and Catherine's going to present that one.
Thank you Chairman. This application relates to a small parcel of land to the north of number nine. The land is currently an open verge. The proposal seeks the change of use of this land to be incorporated into the residential curtilage of number nine, so it's this area to the north of the hatched line on the location plan. The proposal would enable the erection of a one metre high split rail fence with native planting set behind it. This plan shows the existing residential curtilage, so this part of the plan here, the new area to be included which is delineated by the hatching here. This area to the north would remain an open grass verge. I'll just take members briefly through some photographs of the site. So this is the verge in question, this is the existing property, number nine, the existing fence line here, so the new residential curtilage would be set slightly in front of the existing fence line there. This is a view looking west with the verge on your left-hand side here, you can see that the estate is an open plan estate and in the opposite direction, obviously number nine is on the corner junction here and this is the verge to the other side of that junction. This is a view slightly further back so you can see the existing verge which is here and the verge beyond the other side of the road with the tall tree here. There's no objection in principle to the proposal and there is no objection on highway safety grounds. The main issues to be considered by members this evening are the visual impact of the proposal together with any impacts on residential amenity. Officers consider this to be a small alteration to the boundary which would not be to the detriment of the overall character and appearance of the open plan estate. It's therefore recommended that permission is granted as set out on page sixteen of your agenda. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Catherine. This is an item for public speaking and I would invite Mr Ron Wilkinson who is an objector. Good evening Mr Wilkinson, you have four minutes from the time that you start speaking. Thank you.
Good evening Chairman, councillors, officers of the planning department and ladies and gentlemen. I'm speaking on behalf of the objectors to the planning application submitted by Mr and Mrs Sanderson who seek to increase the size of their garden by change of use and enclosure by the erection of fences of a communal grass area adjacent to their garden. This communal land has been for the benefit and enjoyment of all residents of Maple Hatch Close since the houses were built in the early nineteen sixties. If the land is petitioned even by a small amount, it would not only set a precedent but deny the residents the full benefit of this amenity. It would also change the feel of openness unique to the close which we feel very strongly should be protected from this sort of encroachment. We would also like to draw the committee's attention to the Surrey Highways Authority email dated the twenty-third of May two thousand and seventeen to Rebecca Clark of the Waverley Planning Department from which I quote the last sentence. However, the applicant will need to remove the highway rights over this land, that is the stopping up process. This stopping up order would if granted deny access to this land to the community. Naturally, we assume this order will also require the Highway Authority to revisit previous decisions made about this area of grass to ensure that its guidelines as set out in its Transport Development Planning Good Practice Guide have been applied correctly. We also draw attention to the fact that the application contains both site and block plans which do not agree even after much revision, thus there is no precise measure of the extent of this application. Furthermore, both plans contain no key as to the meaning of the red lines. In view of this and the number of supporting documents produced, many of which we feel are either ambiguous or have no relevance to this application, we are of the opinion that the application should be dismissed to save further waste of council resources. There is only one letter of support and more than fifty against this application as well as a petition with eighty-five signatures against the proposal to change the use of this land. Whilst in our view some of the actions by the applicant may well involve issues other than planning considerations, we feel that the Waverley Planning Department might think it prudent to distance itself from this application. Enclosing, the committee is invited to reject the application on the grounds that it requires the acquisition and enclosure into a private garden of communal land. The many changes to the proposal have resulted in an ill-defined and contentious scheme. There are an overwhelming number of objections from a large majority of Maple Hatch Close residents. It requires a stopping up order on the land to be agreed. And finally, the application contains both site and block plans which do not agree. In particular, the plans do not reflect the true position of the newly-elected garage which in our view has a significant bearing on the planning application and has caused us to question its intention. Thank you.
Thank you Mr Wilkinson. Councillor Martin.
Thank you Mr Chairman, I would like to speak on this at length but before I do, could I please have clarification from the officers concerning the assertion that site and block plans do not agree, that there are ill-defined and contentious matters included within and site block plans are not correct? Could I please have guidance from the officers as to whether they believe this to have merit or not?
Officers, would you like to respond to that?
Thank you Chairman, sorry councillor Martin, back to you, but we're content that the block plan accurately shows the position of the proposed new fencing. There's concerns on the block plan on screen on position of the garaging but that doesn't actually affect the correct position of the fencing and enclosure you're considering. So we're happy that you've got a plan in front of you that accurately reflects and shows the positioning of the proposed development.
Is it enforceable?
Yeah, and the plan as such is an enforceable if it were to be approved so we could require it to be carried out in accordance with that plan. Thank you Chairman.
Yes councillor Martin, would you like to come back?
Okay, thank you very much. Chairman, I asked for this application to be brought to full council because there is a large amount of opposition to this application from residents in Maple Hatch Close of which I am one of the two councillors, Tom Martin here being the other councillor for this area. I recognise the strength of opinion and I certainly don't like the proposal to decrease the amount of open grassland. However, there are two considerations I think here. The first is a planning consideration and the second is a land ownership question. There perhaps is a third matter which is the concern over the previous planning application or development for the garage which is at the far left-hand side of the site and that is the subject of an objection from one or two members of the public. However, this I don't think is anything to do with this planning application and shouldn't form part of that. Now, if I go back a little, the original application for this was to take a great big chunk of what is described as open grassland in that plan. In other words, the applicant was wanting to take a very substantial chunk of that open grassland there, that was the original application. Now, we have two matters as I said. Firstly, there's a planning, the planning matter as to whether as a result of such an application, be it for the whole thing or be it for the very reduced amount of land which is now proposed, there is a planning matter as to whether that impinges upon the open design of the estate. There is, throughout the estate there are these patches of land which create an open aspect, the gardens by and large are quite large in the front and this has a very garden-centered feel to it. And of course the loss of a piece of land in this way would certainly have impinged upon the open scene, the visual amenity, the street scene and there would have been in my view a severe impact on residential amenity. Now we have a changed application, it's a reduced application, it's now an application as seen on this plan which is a relatively modest expansion of the garden. Now if we apply those tests as to the openness of the design, the visual amenity, the street scene, perhaps the loss of sightlines for cars and our highways problem, impact on residential amenity, well I don't think in this instance with this reduced application that there would be an impact and that I think is what the officers are saying on page eleven for instance under the planning considerations with the design and visual amenity section, third paragraph, the officers are saying whilst the proposal would result in a reduction of this open land, it is officer's opinion that the land proposed for inclusion into the residential curtilage of number nine Maple Hatch Close would not materially detract from the open feel of the street scene. The parcel of land in question is of a small size which would allow for sufficient open space to be retained within the street scene for communal use. Now, I have to say, I don't like any reduction in that open land, I think that's a sadness but from a planning point of view, I cannot see an objection which would amount to something where we could say from a planning point of view, the objections are so great that there is a loss of visual amenity, there is a loss to the street scene, there is an impact on highways and sightlines and there is an impact on residential amenity. Sadly, I don't think that we could sustain such an argument even though I'm not very happy about it. So from a planning point of view, I really now as a result of the reduction in the application now don't see a planning issue. We then get to the subject of land ownership. Now, the land is not owned by the applicant, it is as far as I understand, it's communal land, there are presumably covenants and there are within the deeds of all of the owners of the houses in Maple Hatch Close a right to the use of this communal land. So of course, if we were to grant planning permission tonight, the fact that planning permission has been granted does not confer ownership rights to the applicant. The applicant as you will see in the officer's report on page fifteen has had to submit a certificate, C ownership certificate which is something which has to be done where an applicant is making an application for a change of use of land or for a planning application for land that that person doesn't own. Now, we can all go and do what we like, I mean I could put in a planning application to extend my son's house if I wished, the fact that I don't own the house is not a planning consideration. So ownership is not a planning consideration. Oh that it were because it would be very straightforward to us, we don't like this fact that there's this portion of land being taken away from these owners and therefore we will not grant planning permission. I don't think we can, planning permission is quite separate from ownership. If planning permission is given, then the owners of the land, the communal owners of the land in Maple Hatch Close can prevent the applicant from expanding his garden by saying no that that's not to happen, they can take legal action to stop him doing that because it's not his land, it's their land. But that's quite separate from this planning application. It would be nice if we could fix the problem for the owners of the communal land in Maple Hatch Close by saying we don't like it because of planning reasons. I would like to do that but sadly I don't think that we can, I don't think that I can. The ownership of the land is quite separate and it's up to the owners to take action to stop this land being developed in this way. The stopping up process and highways land is a bit technical and I don't think that has a bearing on the granting of planning permission or the not granting of planning permission. So although I brought this application to committee in order to give the residents of Maple Hatch Close a chance to speak at the meeting and to hear the deliberations of this committee, I'm very sorry, I'm not able to go against the officer's recommendation and I will have to go with supporting the planning permission although I am not at all keen on it. Thank you Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton.
Thank you Mr Chairman, can I clarify some issues? There seems to be conflicting information about who owns the land, perhaps officers can answer that. Can they also compare the heights of the fences? At the moment there is an existing fence which I wasn't aware of until I'd seen the photographs which seems to be quite high, there is a proposal for a new fence, can you clarify the height of that? Thank you.
Officers, over to you.
Thank you Chairman, I don't have the, I'll start on the heights of the fence first based on approximate measurement which we haven't got the exact measurement, but that is a relatively standard fence panel of about one point eight metres in height and the proposed fencing is going to be a metre in height and supplemented by hedging as well. So it will sit below that and it's difficult to take it on that plan but just over half the height of that existing fence line you'll see coming forward. In terms of the ownership issue, page fifteen of your agenda deals specifically with this and it goes through matters of covenants, deeds, neighbour notification, existing garage points on there and the fourth box deals of the lawfulness of the application and land ownership, common land. Would you like me to read specifically from that? I think that specifically sets out that it's not registered as common land but the applicant is not the, and whilst the applicant's not the registered land owner, this does not mean planning application is invalid or illegal, it's open to anyone as councillor Martin has confirmed. The applicant has completed the certificate C as required, that's set out that that can either be if they know who the applicant is or they don't know who the applicant is, they put an advert in the local paper to take account of that and that's the approach they've taken and confirmed when they've done that ahead of the submission of the planning application. So that's helpful, thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton, would you like to come back?
Thank you for allowing me to come back Mr Chairman. I appreciate first of all the height of the fence, the new, the proposed fence is obviously less than the existing fence so it would seem to be less visually intrusive, but the point about ownership is not clear because, thank you to the officer, both of those statements are nots. The proposal is, the land is not registered common land, fine, the applicant is not the registered legal owner, so who is the legal owner?
Yes Chair, through you, essentially a certificate C is just a statement to say I'm not the owner, so I'm going to let the world at large know that I'm making an application on a particular site and indeed as councillor Martin said, he can make an application on my land and I can make an application on his land, in that instance he would know I was the owner, so in his certificate C he will declare I'm not the owner but probably it's going to be councillor Martin's land. In this particular case, there is no duty when filling out an article C certificate to actually say who the owner is, a member of the public is at large to do a land registry search on that, you can go to the land registry online, do what is a site index map search and find out who the owner is. Now, I don't want to surmise, you've heard the objectors say it's in communal land ownership, normally in estate ownership and vacant land it goes back to the original estate owner. So whoever was the developer ordinarily retains ownership of the estate area, so in this instance the verges and the communal parks for example. With regards to the question as to who the owner is, the simple point is the applicant does not have to name it.
Who is the owner? Have we not done a land registry search?
It's not relevant.
It's not relevant.
Absolutely not.
I would just like to know what the owner's attitude to this proposal was.
It's not a planning consideration councillor Bolton. Okay, councillor Reynolds.
Thank you Chairman, well as I said earlier, I've lived off this plot of land a long time ago for ten years and it was a reasonably well-used plot of land for playing by children, myself, my sister and all our friends, it has been used by residents certainly in those days and I suspect nothing has much changed since. I think the issue, Peter Martin has kindly sort of gone into this at quite length and I think it's as we are hearing, it's quite a confusing picture. But there is an issue of a lack of, or a loss of amenity in the neighbour taking this land away from the local community to put it into their own garden, the purpose of which I assume is that they've built a large garage at the end of their garden and realised actually they've been left with much less garden they'd like, so that seems to be the reason why they'd like to extend their garden which is very nice, I'd quite like to extend my garden but I think I'll stick to the bits of land I own rather than try and pinch it from other people. So it's a difficult one. I'm in principle against it because it does set a precedent and the amenity bit is arguable obviously, I think there is a loss of amenity if it's, whether it's enough is the difficult question to answer. From looking at the plan, I guess the applicant wants to take somewhere between fifteen and twenty per cent of that bit of land which is not insubstantial and the other thing I'd say also is, the way it was designed in the outset, it seems to mirror the bit of amenity land on the opposite side of the road, so yeah, as a design bit it sort of looks in keeping, you've got a nice big straight line carving the land, the amenity land to one side of the housing land. The other thing I think is going to look a bit strange is you're going to have three foot high fencing which then suddenly descends to one foot, oh sorry, three metre high fencing which descends there to one metre high fencing which is going to look a little bit strange, so perhaps there's a visual immunity angle there. So I think it's councillor Martin, it is a difficult one, I think I'm on balance thinking I would object to this because I just think it sets a precedent and it's not the sort of thing that should be encouraged, but I appreciate that perhaps there isn't any great super planning decision that we could make to substantiate my decision. One other just quick question, is there a condition we could put to stop the person actually then deciding once they've done this, if it is approved tonight, that they, oh actually I'd quite like another little bit of garden, a little bit of that land, so let's have another twenty per cent and sort of piecemeal take even more of it because we'll probably have the same argument next time we come to here if they decide they want to make their garden even bigger.
Peter, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you Chairman, I'll just pick up on the question about a condition, that is not something that we could apply unfortunately, we can't second guess what further development might come forward. It would require planning permission in its own right in any case for the change of use of land as we're considering it now and we'd make that assessment on the basis of that, so anything going further forward would need its own planning permission. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Tom Martin.
Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to say I agree entirely, perhaps for a change with the senior councillor Martin. I also dislike the idea of this application but given the planning grounds, find it difficult to find a material reason to counter our officer's conclusion. That said, I do have a difficulty with the officer's justification of this application as detailed on page eleven. Ultimately, where is the line drawn? I mean a ten per cent incursion into the open space, twenty-five per cent incursion and I fear that we've been here before with sort of in Milford of developments happening and you say, well is one house acceptable, is two houses acceptable? You know, if somebody were taking the whole plot of that land, would that inherently, not around the land ownership, but would that inherently change our perception of it? The sightlines would be significantly reduced rather than marginally reduced and so on, but we are where we are, we have the application in front of us. I don't particularly like this and I absolutely can see where the local neighbours are coming from, but on planning grounds, we are on a sticky wicket if we were to go in a different direction. As the other councillor Martin has already said, much of the difficulty with this application surrounds ownership, as has already been discussed at some length, this is not something that we can actually take into consideration here this evening despite the fact that we might be uncomfortable with it. I assume that if the ownership of land is unclear, other residents could lay claim to that land on the grounds that it is unclaimed land to essentially protect the local area. I assume that that is an option that is open to them. But other than that reluctantly, I can't find a reason that we can go against the officer's recommendations this evening despite my feeling somewhat uncomfortable about the precedent it sets.
Thank you. Councillor James and then councillor Holder.
Thank you Chairman, could the officer just point out where on that plan the cherry tree is? Because visually the tree, it is outside of the possible ownership of the new land because that's quite important because otherwise they'll just take the tree. Because otherwise, they'll just take the tree down and then that does spoil that view. Thank you.
Yes, it is outside of the sight line. It's not a protected tree as such, but I would say it's roughly in this position here. Thank you.
Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. I tend to agree with councillor Reynolds. This is what I think is commonly known as salami slice application, where you just continually add more and more as the years go on. But I do agree with councillor Tom Martin that I think it's up to the residents to now apply to own the rest of that, to stop that happening. And if they're prepared to do that, then I have no problem with this tiny little piece of land being acquired by the applicant.
Thank you. Councillor Wheatley.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. A couple of questions. I heard the answer to councillor Reynolds' question about a condition on the land. But would it be within our control to say that no further development within the main curtilage of the dwelling were possible? So that if they don't expand, they aren't tempted to try to grab any more land? That is question one. Do we have any control over that, please?
Officers, would you like to respond to question one? It sounds like we've got more to come.
Thank you, Chairman. I think what you're asking is, could they then build additional things on here and then seek further land? From memory, the general permitted development order doesn't allow things to be built between a dwelling and a highway. So I think I would probably advise against restricting any permitted development rights because you could possibly be found unreasonable in applying such a condition. Thank you.
Do you have a further question?
Yes, please, Mr Chairman. Excuse my ignorance, but could someone tell me what a split fence looks like?
It's a chestnut post and railway. You get the post and then you get two which are usually sort of cut in a triangular way and slightly not straight, correct? Yes, is that what you understand?
That's a good description. We do have a photo on file if it's helpful. But it's not on the presentation. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, I'd be grateful because I actually took myself round there this afternoon. And I noticed that the majority of gardens have their lawns running straight down to the pavement. And you have the two pieces of land either side. And I thought the fence there at the present is decidedly dilapidated. So it could be... To be honest, thank you very much, I think that with greenery would actually be quite an improvement on the existing. I very much wish we could protect residents from any further incursion. But as things are, I think I will have to go with the officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. On what has been said tonight, I find this approach by the applicant rather underhand. Now, of course, that's nothing at all to do with planning. I appreciate that. But in voicing concerns about this approach, that is my... You know, I object to that sort of thing. The other thing is that the photographs have proved very helpful to me. And I see that whereas there is the sort of fencing, there's a gaping hole. I don't know how long that has been in place, but that's not particularly good visual amenity for older residents. And this approach does seem very reasonable and the photograph just shown by Emma looks very nice indeed. However, my sort of experience of people and hedges these days is that it all starts off quite well and then the owners tend to sort of forget about it. And we get greenery growing through all the gaps and it's not trimmed. And bearing in mind that there is that gaping hole there, I wonder what the residents, how attentive they are or how attentive they would be to looking after this hedge that they're going to build. And I just think that, you know, that too would detract from amenity. And it doesn't lend itself, I think, to what the residents would really prefer, something that's tidy and always looks visually attractive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the officers or members before we move to the recommendation? Okay, the recommendation is that subject to conditions 1 to 7 and informatives 1 to 5, permission be granted. Can I have all those in favour of granting permission, please?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9.
And those against?
1, 2, 3, 4.
Okay, the recommendation is approved. Moving on to item B1, which is WA 2017 0826. So item B1, WA 2017 0826, land to the rear of 3436 High Street, Godling, GU71DZ. Pages 19 to 38 of your agenda. And Catherine again is going to present this one.
Thank you, Chairman. The application site is located to the rear of numbers 34 to 36 on the High Street in Godling. This is the Lloyds Pharmacy for ease of reference. The site comprises a parcel of unused land with pedestrian access only from the Crown Court car park. So you have the car park at the top of the plan here. Obviously, walk through Crown Court onto the High Street here. There is a pedestrian access around the side of this building here into the land edged in red. The proposal is for the erection of a two-storey building to provide two one-bedroomed flats, one on each floor. Each flat would have its own enclosed private garden area with bin storage. The existing pedestrian access would be utilised for both of the flats. There's currently a fence across the centre of the site, so there is currently no access to the rear of numbers 34 to 36 and that would not alter as part of this proposal. Just take you through the plans for the application. This is the proposed ground floor plan showing the first flat with living accommodation and a bedroom and the use of the garden area here. And similar on the first floor. And obviously, the garden closer to the Crown Court car park would serve that property. This is the elevation from, as you stand in Crown Court car park, looking at the back of the properties here. This is the building we are considering this evening. Property here next door is Octavia House, I believe in use as a dental practice. The side elevation and in the opposite direction. And this is looking from numbers 34 and 36 out towards the proposed building. There has previously been a refused scheme on this site in 2016. These are by comparison, the elevations. You can see it was a much bigger building. And that is the side elevation. For ease of reference, I have done a quick comparison of the two schemes. As you can see, the proposed building would be reduced by a metre in width, very marginally longer. There would be a reduction of 17.5 square metres in the overall footprint and there would be a reduction in eaves and ridge height. Just take you through some photographs. This is a photograph looking towards the site. So it is to the right-hand side of this panel fencing here. That is the application site. This is taken from the corner of the Wilfrid Neuss Centre in the Crown Court car park. And again, this is a closer view, looking in the same direction. The pedestrian access to the site is here where this hedging is and that would remain and be utilised for the two dwellings. This is a photograph taken from within the site, looking towards the back of numbers 34 and 36. As you can see, the site is overgrown and you can just see in the distance there the existing fence line that delineates the back part of the site from the front. Again, taken a bit further into the site, this is Octavia House to the side of the existing site. And this is a view looking from Crown Court over the existing sort of single store... I think it's a porter cabin as opposed to a building there. Octavia House in the distance. So the building proposed would be sighted between this single-story building here and Octavia House. The site is located within the town centre conservation area. It has been subject to assessment by the council's Historic Buildings Officer, who has raised no objection to the proposal. The development is also acceptable in terms of highway safety, access and parking. There are no concerns with regards to archaeology on the site. Therefore, the matters this evening before members are the impact on visual amenity and the impact on residential amenity, including the residential amenities of any future occupants. The recommendation, as set out in the agenda, is that permission is granted subject to conditions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Catherine. Members? Councillor James.
I've got absolutely no problem with it at all, Chairman. And to me, it is an absolutely brilliant use of a derelict brownfield site. And I think if we were in Kensington, Chelsea, we'd be putting loads more on it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councillor Wheatley.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I have to say I agree with my neighbour. It seems a very clever use of a piece of land. This time, it doesn't look as though they're trying to be greedy. We are in need of small premises for local workers. I only hope they could be able to afford them. Obviously, because you're so close to a car park, the fact that there isn't any car parking can't be material. And they've actually given each flat a little piece of land for amenity purposes. So I think I'd have to go with the officers. Thank you.
Councillor Tom Martin.
Generally, this seems like a pretty good fit. I've got one question, which probably isn't entirely material planning, but it's curiosity really. Where is the access to the gardens? I appreciate that the ground floor flat has direct access onto it. I can't see the access point to the garden for the first floor flat.
Very good point, councillor Martin. I think they're missing their access point on that plan. If you want, we could add another condition, asking them to provide us with details of the delineation of the garden boundaries to include an opening.
It might be a good idea.
Thank you.
I guess they could always put a conservatory in that garden.
Presumably, they'll just have a gate off the pedestrian access, won't they?
I've got visions of them putting a conservatory in the garden.
Chairman?
Yes, Peter.
Instead of just adding another condition, would members be happy if the resolution is to grant that we take away subject to a slightly revised plan showing an opening in that plan? So we don't have to bring it back to committee, but rather than applying them to have to do something else?
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, agreed. Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think I may have been the councillor called in, but it is for two dwellings anyway. I recognise that the bulk of the proposed property has significantly been decreased from a previous application. But I am concerned about access to the site. Is this something that we should worry, be concerned about in approval or denial of a planning application? Because it strikes me as extremely difficult for the contractors to get access to the site for building the property. Thank you.
A lot of men will be employed with small wheelbarrows, running backwards and forwards. Officers, I don't think that's really a planning consideration, is it? But I mean, I'd look to you to confirm.
Chairman, yes, I mean, it is slightly constrained on access, but that will be something that the construction or company or the contractors will have to deal with appropriately. It's not out of the question that they can't deal with that. There is an access to the site as type, but you could get appropriate excavation plant in there to get the works going or do it by hand. So, thank you, Chairman.
Or it's quite possible they could arrange access through somebody else's land for a short period.
I may, Mr Chairman... Yes, I was just about to make that point. Would they have to come back for planning permission to gain access over other properties? No? Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. No, they wouldn't require that. They would just need the agreement of the landowner. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Upton.
Presumably, we're not going to fowl any newts or bats in that area, in that wild piece of woodland.
I'm sure they can be arranged if you'd like them. I'm sure the biodiversity checklist has been completed for this site and approved by the officers. Statutory document that has to accompany all planning applications now. Are you happy that we move to the recommendation, which is that subject to conditions 1 to 7 and informatives 1 to 5, permission be granted? All those in favour?
Yeah, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much. So that is, the officer's recommendation is agreed. We now come to the next item, which is exclusion of pressum public. As there are no public here, there's no need for me to read this out in full. It is in your agenda that public are excluded. So we move on. Mr Chairman, please.